Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to or the October 21st meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. That's 2015. We have, we, let me, let me just quickly suggest if you would join us in a moment of Thank you very much. We need to adopt our agenda, which has not changed.
Madam Chairman, move for adoption. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Thank you. We have citizen, excuse me, committee reports. Let me get to that. And could we start with Chris Mullen with Comprehensive Plans and Programs?
Yes, Madam Chairman. The committee met back on October 12th last week, and we kicked off the citizen review panels for the 2035 Comprehensive Plan update. And those different groups will be broken down by the different land use components. So the groups will be doing their work over the next several weeks, and we'll keep the ball moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, Mr. Chuck Dunlap, who?
Hey. The HRAB met last evening. Items discussed were rezoning application in the process for 81 West Business Park and the 2035 Comprehensive Plan update. With regard to the proposed rezoning, the consensus of the committee was that the application has no impact on the Robinson Klein house, which is an historic house. It's located near the application property, but not adjacent. There was a general discussion on the 2035 Plan Comp Plan update. Number of questions and discussions about the role of the HRAB in implementing the elements of the plan, and the committee will summarize their comments and questions and so forth, and send it to the CPSC.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Greg Unger for the sanitation authority?
Yes, ma'am. We met last night. This is for the month of September. The total customer base for water is 14,429. Sanitary is 13,941. Rainfall for the month of September was 3.83. Previous month was 1.8, so that was up a little bit, and we're still doing real good as far as the average is concerned. We drew 1.9 million gallon per day from the Deal plant for water. We drew 2.0 million gallon per day from the Anderson plant. We purchased 1.6 million gallon per day from the city, and daily average is about 5.6, which is pretty normal for this time of year. Percentage of the system's capacity right now is about 75%, so we still got about 25% of our capacity that we can still use. The Deal plant in Stevens City's elevation was down about two feet. The Anderson plant was down just about the same. It was about two feet. And the unaccountable water for last month was about 18%, which is high, but they feel like they may have made a mistake in some of the numbers they were working with, and they felt like it was more than the single digits. So they're going to work on that and see if they can give a better report next month. That well that we dug in Lake Frederick is producing between 350,000 and 500,000 gallon of water per day, which is a very good well for, you know, just stuck out there, and we're real happy with that. We've also got another well close to that area that's going to produce about 100,000 gallon of water per day. So we've got a pretty good water source down there. It should be in operation within a year or so. We'll be using from that soon. Down at Round Hill, we still don't have a well site picked out. They're working on that. We do have, we are going to try to get a well down there, get one if it's productive, but we still don't have a site for it yet. So we're working on that also.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Hess, the board meet?
Madam Chairman, you can just splice in my report from the previous meeting, as the board has not met since the last Planning Commission meeting, but we are scheduled to meet next Wednesday.
Excellent. Thank you. And Ms. Martha Schickel from the City of Winchester.
The Planning Commission did not meet either.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. This is the time on our agenda where we ask for citizen comments for anything except that which is a public hearing. And it seems that we have seven public hearings tonight, so that if you're interested in any of those items, you can speak to it when they come up. But if you have something else that you'd like to share with us, we certainly welcome your comments. Anybody? Well, seeing no one, we will close the citizen comment portion. This is a public hearing. It is a conditional use permit 03-15 for Gary Rogers' Arjus for a cottage occupation dealing with the sale of sheds. The property is located at 1518 Fairfax Pike, White Post, Virginia, and the property is identified with property identification number 87-A-12-D in the Opeckin Magisterial District. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, this property currently is owned RA Rural Areas and its use is residential. It's surrounded by RA properties that are used for residential, and in the rear is M1, which is a manufacturing, our manufacturing district. If I could turn your attention to a map on the left, give you an idea where this property is located on 277. Property's an 11-acre parcel. And this is the house where the residents where the Arjuses live. This is the garage, which this, where this conditional use permit will be taking place. And I'll get into more of that as we present this case in front of you. The applicant is looking to assemble sheds and also sell sheds on this property as a conditional use permit for cottage occupation. It's, his business plan, basically, most of the sales of the sheds are by Internet basis. However, the applicant would like to have an opportunity to have folks, if they order it, customers to come to their property, and it will be mentioned as conditions. The construction, or I should say, assembly of the sheds as they come will be in a accessory structure, which is a garage. Actually, it's a approximately 500 square foot garage at the rear of the property. Should the Planning Commission find this application for the sale of sheds cottage occupation to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions be assigned to this conditional use permit. Number one, all review agency comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, no more than five customers at one time on the site. Number three, no more than seven sheds for display or sales should be allowed on the properties, and the sheds shall be kept in the rear of the property. Number four, an illustrious sketch plan shall be submitted to and approved by Frederick County, and all the planned improvements shall be implemented prior to operating the business. And for your edification, this is the first conditional use permit we have coming forward that actually has an illustrious sketch plan, which we changed in ordinance. We had required at one time, you know, minor site plans and things of that nature, but this is one of the things for a conditional use permit and some other land use actions that we use. So that's just to familiarize with you. That's something new. There'll be one business sign allowed and should conform the cottage occupation sign requirements and sign exceed four square feet in size and five feet in height. And then, number six, any expansion or use will require new conditional use permit. For the record, Madam Chairman, Mr. Arjus is here to answer the questions you or any of the members of the Planning Commission may have on this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Question to staff. I understand why condition two is in there, but how would we enforce that? And what would we tell the owner to do if he has five customers on site and a sixth and seventh one stop?
Well, again, most of his customers are based. I'm going to let him answer that because, yeah.
Most of them are Internet-based and all that, but if there's a, I guess what I'm getting to is, we have a condition on there that there's no way we could enforce it. So why would we have it on there?
We have to, I guess, the best answer for that, Mr. Thomas, is to set a baseline. That's, plus, it's a cottage occupation, too, so it has to be incidental for what you have going on out there.
You know, it's different than a barber shop or something like that, where they have two chairs and all that. It's just if somebody stops, what are we going to tell them to go out there and chase any customer past five off? I think we're just setting, okay. Understand.
Any other questions with Mr. Chair? Would the applicant like to address the commission, or does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
Madam Chairman, I'm Bruce Downing speaking on behalf of the applicant. He's here. You have a long agenda. We agree with the staff commissions, and we know of no objections by the neighbors, and we're here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Any thoughts about this conditional use permit?
Is she open in the public hearing?
No. We will want to ask the public if they have any comments about this to address us now? Yes?
Sorry. Not very good at public speaking, but I'll do the best I can and not take up too much time. I do have several things.
Would you give us your name, please?
Yes. My name is Samantha Smith, and I'm of White Post, Virginia.
Okay. Thank you.
There are several things that I'd like to address. Number one thing that concerns me is the speed limit of which this stretch of road is. It is 55 miles an hour on that stretch of road, and I travel that road several times a day with my infant son. And there have been several occasions where there have been close calls in front of this address, because people, I guess, are looking for it, and they see a shed sitting out there, and they almost go past the driveway, so they slam on their brakes. And that has caused a lot of concern for me. Now, there, the instances I'm talking about have been close calls because I slow down. I don't follow too close. I keep a buffer zone. And whenever I go through this stretch of road, I actually have slowed down to 45 miles an hour. But the problem is, is the guy behind me gets irritated at going 45 miles an hour, so he speeds up and passes me on a double solid line. I don't think that the speed limit, if this conditional use permit passes, I don't think the speed limit through this area should be 55. I think it should at least be reduced to 45, especially since there is a high school right up the road, and there are a lot of high school, brand-new drivers that aren't paying attention, and they do follow too close. And I'm just, I'm worried that there will be an issue of having a major accident in front of this address. There is also my concern of, he, at this point in time, he has, I didn't personally count, but I would say probably 15 to 20 sheds on this particular lot. At this time, not a single one of those sheds is anchored to the ground, which is a requirement to have storage sheds on a property of over 144 square foot. Now, there's a reason for that rule. I don't exactly know what it is, because I'm not on the board, but I would say that those sheds need to be anchored to the ground so that, in the case of a natural disaster or something, you don't end up with buildings going all the way down wherever, flooding or whatever the case may be. And my last and final point, and then I'll let you all go on with your evening, is the fact of, whenever he originally opened a business, he was told, I'm sure at that time, he had to put down what the address was and go through zoning. And if you're told at that time not to have, you know, this, that, and the other, or what you can and you can't do, going by the rules and regulations, and he's done it for the past year without following the rules and regulations, then by granting a permission to use it with under rules and regulations, who's to say that he's going to follow that? Because he's already broken the rules to begin with. Me and myself, that's sort of like me telling my son, "Don't jump on the bed," and then whenever he does it, say, "Well, you can jump on the bed, but only if you don't wear shoes," and see how well that works out. I thank you all for your time, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this conditional use permit? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any comments from you? Mark?
The, addressing the speed limit, can't address it. I'll just point to the application, what the Department of Transportation said in reviewing this application. Business is small enough now. Should it grow any bit, they'll have to put a commercial entrance in. That may require also, if the business would grow on the site, that may kick our site plan requirement in, and that will be addressed later. As far as the sheds, the building official has been out there, looked at the, everything is out there. I acknowledge that there's nothing, you know, the certain square footage of sheds, of course, you need building permit. Under a certain square footage, you don't. The business has grown, and the applicant did start out as a home occupation. Again, it grew to where it is now, and that's why they're here for the conditional use permit. Again, once we put the, as you're all well aware of, the board approves this conditional use permit, we're stuck there with the seven sheds, the five customers, the business sign. So that should alleviate any other issues that are our concerns at this property.
Yes.
Is it, I mean, on the speed limit, that's a good point. I hadn't thought about that. There are a number of businesses along that road there. There's landscaping, there's a farmer's market. The farmer's market has many more than five cars there, you know, and there's the manufacturing business there. So would it be appropriate for us to ask VDOT to look at that, to see if the speed limit should be lowered to 45?
Take it under consideration.
Actually, I think the procedure would be to kick it over to Transportation Committee, and they would, and then also, putting up the sign may alleviate sudden stops, if people see the sign where they're going to turn ahead of time.
Like I said, there's a number of other businesses there already. It's turning into a business for small businesses. She's good.
Madam Chair, this is in Opeckin District. I looked at the site. I think it's a good use. It's a, it's a good business. I would recommend approval of conditional use permit 03-15 with the deletion of condition two. I don't see how we can enforce that condition.
Mr. Second? Any other comments?
My only comment, you know, I don't disagree about the challenges of enforcing it. You know, I think it is a problem. I think the only, if there's a value in it, it does set kind of an understood scale to the business at the location. You know, without that, I mean, it is somewhat, you know, wide open. And as a cottage occupation versus a, you know, a full-blown commercial site, I think, you know, it makes sense to have some levels or limitations. I mean, I don't think if somebody's got six, if he's got six or seven people, that's never going to be the deal that, you know, causes a problem. It's going to be, you know, if he hit some other level of success, I'm not sure how many people are out there looking at sheds every day, but, you know, if he had 20, 30 people out there on a routine basis, then that's something that could be enforced. So that would be my only concern. I mean, I wouldn't vote against your motion, but.
I'd agree with you. If it was a business that I think would draw 20 or 30 people every day.
Fair enough.
Any other comments? Any at all? We're ready to vote. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogie, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Kenny, no.
Triplet, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moon, yes.
Wilmot votes yes. And the, this will go to the Board of Supervisors on November the 12th. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from items four and five of the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's Woodside Res zoning 07-15, Woodside Land Company LLC, submitted by Gray Woolink, to rezone 20 acres of property from RA Rural Areas District to M2 Industrial General District with proffers. The property is located on the southern side of Route 669, Woodbine Road, about 2,000 feet east of Route 11. And adjacent to the Winchester Western Railroad is identified by property identification number 34A-6D in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Ruddy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, on the screen to your left is the property that you just described. And of course, this is the 20-acre parcel for which the applicant is requesting a rezoning from the RA District to the M2 District, the Industrial General District. You can see from this next map where it is in relationship to some of the properties surrounding it, in particular to the west, that are already zoned M1 Light Industrial. On the north and south side of Woodbine Road, to the north is the Samples property, and to the south is the industrial property that's currently used by Frederick County Public Schools. This property, as you pointed out, is on the east side of the Winchester and Western Railroad tracks. It's south of Woodbine Road, and you can see, as we zoom on in a little bit closer there, Woodbine Road, as it crosses the railroad tracks, heads east, crosses Duncan's Run, and then makes a sharp right-hand turn, followed by a left-hand turn in the vicinity of the frontage of this property where the entrance would be located. What the applicant has done with this request is provided just a rough generalized development plan, which is very straightforward for this 20-acre parcel, but it clearly shows the Woodbine Road right-of-way. It shows Duncan Run and the associated floodplains along each side of Duncan Run. It also highlights the proposed entrance location and the hatched area that I'll point out, which was a proffer for an easement for a potential well site, should it be determined that that's a viable site in the future. A relatively straightforward request, however, there are some, some issues, if you will, that go with any request, in particular this one. The applicant's proffers, I'll just run through very briefly. The applicant has proffered a maximum development of 102,500 square feet of building area on the site. The relevance of that is that that is the square footage that was modeled in the Transportation Impact Analysis, the TIA, for this request. So the applicant has tried to maintain that, that level of development and understanding the traffic impacts. Now, the proffers have also included a 75 cents per building square foot proffer for transportation to be used for transportation improvements in the general area. No particular transportation improvements have been actually identified, but that is money that would be available to some in the area. Another proffer is a 10 cents per building square foot contribution for fire and rescue services in the area. And as I mentioned, the applicant's also proffered an easement for public use for a production well, if it's determined to be viable in the future. So those are the proffers that the applicant has provided. We recognize that the land use itself, the industrial land use designation, is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, but it's important to recognize some of those impacts that are anticipated with this request that may not be fully addressed with the applicant's proffer statement. Primarily, they revolve around transportation, and I'll hit on those, and if we have any questions to Mr. Bishop's here, that can also talk about the transportation associated with this request. But first and foremost, I think it's important to recognize the condition of Woodbine Road, Route 669, in the vicinity of this project. If you've been out there, obviously, we know that the road is relatively rural in condition, includes a low-water bridge crossing of Duncan Run, and includes some pretty significant turns in the road and across the frontage of this property. So that's important to recognize. Long term, the Comprehensive Plan identifies a major collector road, Woodbine Road, extending east from its current location with development. However, that development is, of course, on the property, property to the north, not owned by this applicant. So the potential cash contribution of 75 cents per building square foot has the ability to generate up to, but no more than $76,000 for transportation improvements in that general area. Recognizing the scale of that and the cost of transportation improvements, that potential amount doesn't appear to address the improvements that may well be needed to the road and to other transportation solutions in the general area. Recognizing that other projects, as we head out to 81, Route 11, Woodbine Road, Samples, may well bring some of those improvements online at some point in the future, and they're, of course, not in the works presently. So recognizing the conformance of the Comprehensive Plan from a land use perspective, but some of the impacts, in particular the transportation impacts, the Planning Commission should ultimately provide a recommendation, following the public hearing, on this particular request. Be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Again, Mr. Bishop is here. If we need to go into the transportation a little bit more. But Mr. Tim Stowe is here tonight representing this application.
Thank you. Any questions? Mike? Any?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stowe, would you like to address us now, or Mr. Bishop? One or the other?
Just as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
As Mr. Ruddy said, this project was scaled to, to be able to work with the transportation network that's in place out there. In fact, our goal was to not generate more than 100 vehicles, 100 trips during the peak hour. We realize that the roadway is, is small, is windy. We also realize there's M1 land out there that's being used presently with Frederick County Public Schools and, and other uses. But we feel like this modest level of traffic is not going to overtax the roadway. And the roadway has plenty of width to navigate through the curves, and the amount of, of traffic that'll be generated with this scale of development could certainly be handled on the roadway. In fact, all the levels of service on Woodbine Road and at the intersection of Martinsburg Pike reported out to be acceptable, CBA. So we didn't feel like there was a problem with Woodbine Road. I would say there are constraints on what we can do, and those were shown on one of the slides Mr. Ruddy showed, and that's in the form of a, a stream and its associated floodplain and wetlands, where it would be very difficult to do roadway improvements on this property owner's property. And that's why the master plan for the area shows the developments occurring to the north. The intent was for this monetary contribution to help with those improvements when the time comes to do those, but to scale this project down and to throttle it back so that the traffic here does not overtax the roadway system. With that said, I'd be glad to answer any questions that I may. I am pinch-hitting, so please don't ask me any hard questions.
The traffic, the 100 units, is that truck traffic, a mixture, or?
Generally speaking, in a development of this type, about 8% of the traffic is trucks, and the balance of it is either employees or, or customers who may be coming and driving their car or a pickup truck, so.
Is this a warehouse?
Yes, sir. That's the type of use it'll be.
Mr. Moon?
Just a quick question, Mr. Stowe. What was the basis for the, for the 75 cents for that value?
That had been used in some previous projects that had come before the commission and the Board of Supervisors, and that was the basis of it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Thomas?
I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned on the traffic impact, your, your view of the traffic impact. You say 8% would be multi-axle vehicles, tractor-trailers, I guess. The road as it looks now, the condition it's in, would it structurally be able to sustain even 8% of tractor-trailer traffic without significant maintenance occurring repeatedly? And especially when you have part of it in a floodplain? That's a very problematic situation, because, you know, even if it doesn't flood, there's going to be times when it's going to be structurally impaired because of water in the base. And I just don't see that, that road, that area, being able to take tractor-trailer traffic. And they'll tear it up extremely quickly. And even if you say customers coming in, car traffic's not too bad, even pickup traffic. When you start loading them up, and multi-axle pickups, stakebodies, when you start loading them up, they'll, they'll tear that road up pretty quickly. You know, fortunately, the taxpayers. You know, fortunately, the taxpayers are the ones that are going to have to fix the road. What's your view of that? Have you looked at that and analyzed it at all?
We have not done any type of analysis of the soil conditions or the pavement that's out there in place, but what I would tell you is, at present, there are trucks accessing the Frederick County warehouse there on a regular basis, and there's also agricultural traffic using this road on a regular basis, which is potentially heavier than what you would get with a tractor-trailer on the road. So we know that's using the road, and we know the road is holding together under the circumstances.
Well, actually, contact pressures of a tractor-trailer are higher than a wagon or a vehicle, most farm traffic, unless you're talking about big combines or something like that. But, I mean, that's even a problem, sharing the road with farm traffic and trailers. I mean, is this an appropriate use there, or is it an appropriate transportation system to accommodate the use?
Well, based on a comprehensive plan, it would appear that that's the direction the county has decided to go, and this is in keeping with that comprehensive plan. So it would seem that it is, yes. I understand your concern.
Comprehensive plan may envision traffic improvements, transportation improvements. Okay, I'll ask Mr. Bishop.
Anything else for Mr. Stowe? Yes, Mr. Unger.
Just a comment. With us using the 75 cents per square foot, it's what we've been doing in the past, I don't know how you could expect someone to do anything different in that they've got something to go by, and it sounds like what they're doing. I mean, what do you want, 95 cents? You want $2? To me, if we've been accepting that, that's what it looks like we would do now. That's just an opinion.
Well, if it's on a basis, I would agree with you, with the exception of, as time goes on, things get more expensive, and I'm not sure, you know, if that 75 cents was five years ago or 10 years ago, that's probably $1.50 or $2.00 now.
I remember them, and it hadn't been that long ago.
One else?
Mr. Stowe, what's the speed limit on that road now? What, 55, 45?
I believe it's 45, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions of Mr. Stowe? Questions of Mr. Bishop? Thank you, Mr. Stowe.
My question goes back to the use, too, and is it traffic going to be too intensive? Would it require an extensive amount of maintenance on that section of the road?
Not having actually done cores of the roadway and that sort of thing, I hate to speak to what I don't know as a fact, as far as what that specific piece of pavement can or can't handle. What I'm pretty confident saying is, I doubt that that road was built to the standard that VDOT would require for that type of a use if you were building a new road today. So I'd say your concern is valid. I'll say I don't necessarily know the actual answer to it when you consider the distance between this development, pardon me, and Route 11 itself, but it is a valid concern and likely a reality.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Bishop, can you comment on rail issues?
I can sure try.
Yes. I did go out and look at the site, and I looked down the track, and here were rail cars lined up, and the track is straight as a die. And the question is, if this is an M2 piece, if the rezoning is to M2, which is our heavier industrial category, then this site would be a dandy candidate for rail siding, if a rail siding can be put on it with the length of its boundary. I would just throw that out.
I would say that's accurate. The length looks good. We've obviously had another one just down the road, not that long ago, that's actually, I believe, down there at CSX, but I think by the time you get up here, we're actually Winchester and Western. I have double-checked that piece, and of course, there are rail access funds available through the state to assist in such a project, which we would love to be a part of, so.
Right. Anybody else?
Just another comment.
Yes.
I don't know who pulled off the place to put a well, but it's appreciated if it does pass. Something much needed in the county.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to rezoning 07-15? Anyone at all? Well, then we will close the public hearing. We have a rezoning in a Magisterial District whose representatives are not able to make a motion, so we'll have to share whatever motion it is with someone else. Sir?
I would be glad to answer questions if you would like me to.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Light?
John Light, I'm the applicant. I'd be glad to answer any questions or explain a little bit to you.
Mike, could you pull up the map from Route 11?
To address the rail issues, currently, it's Winchester and Western. Take me down to Route 11.
I'll do that, and we've got that one out. That's as far as we go.
That's good enough. It's Winchester and Western Railroad. Last year, they wanted a siding to be able to stack empty cars, so they basically came in and put a second rail line as a stacking parking area that ran about 2,000 linear feet down my property. Since then, they've finished that one. Now they're doing a third one on the west side, so there is significant parking there for Winchester and Western Railroad. There is an ability to hook on to that rail site, and state funding is available to be able to do that. To answer some of the questions about Woodbine Road, from the railroad west to Route 11 has been upgraded to tractor-trailer status, so to speak. That was done back probably 15 years ago. It was widened approximately 18 inches on each side and then capped, so the parcel, the amount of roadway that we're looking to address through the proffer is from the railroad to the turn, which is not a very long distance. If you want to take into consideration the whole road from my property out to Route 11, there are proffers in place from the Samples' property that does address upgrading that road intersection. There is another road that makes a right, goes through the Samples' property, and comes into, it's a collector road, comes in straight into the red light at Rest Church Road. I did agree to the 75, 76 cents because it was used just right up the road from me on a rezoning that was there about two years ago, and also another rezoning in the past 12 months out on the south end of the county. As an applicant, I have to assume that you all use a guide to go by through your model, impact model. So if that is the, two of the last examples that are out there, then naturally, I have to say that's what I'm going to go with. As far as, do I have an intention of doing anything? No. I also live there, also farm there. I don't, I want to be able to sell land and retire because that's my 401K at some point. It takes years for the wheel of industrial development to happen, so I'm starting now before I get too old. If you want me to address tractor-trailer traffic, if in the impact, in the TIA, they're calling eight trips per day in tractor-trailer traffic, I already do that. And yes, our loads are probably heavier than any other load that would come in there on a tractor-trailer because we're running full weight every time we go in and out of that road. There is no impairment to the road whatsoever. Would it need to be upgraded? Yes, but the part I'm speaking of is from the corner to the railroad, which is a very small distance. So that was the reason for that. Be glad to answer any more questions that you all have.
Mr. Light? Thank you, sir.
Well, John, I mean, you even say that it would need to be upgraded from the corner to the railroad. Would you expect, when you sell the property, for those folks to upgrade it, or?
Yes. But bear in mind also that there's another 180 acres there. I got to crawl before I can walk. In order to be able to do this, I have to start somewhere. And I used what I thought was the perfect examples of everything, and as I sat here for 20 years, if somebody said 100 trips per day on a TIA, that's about the lowest I've ever heard. And I think you'd have to agree with that. That's pretty minimal impact, and I go back and say, I want to live there, I farm there. This is a useless piece of agricultural ground. It is rocky, beyond-farmable condition. It's deserving of asphalt. So I don't know how else to tell you any better. I don't have any intentions of really doing anything at this yet, at this state. I'm just taking the first step, meeting the average across the board of what we saw that the county was accepting, and saying, yeah, I'm willing to pay my way, pay my share. The big question comes into play is, what is the use of the Samples' property, and how intense is that? Because that will also modify that road, won't modify the section from the railroad to my property, but I'd kind of like to live there and see what happens and be glad to help as I need it. But there again, I have to assume that you, you, the county, come up with those numbers to accept from other applicants. When you go buy a car, you don't offer the dealer another $200 because you like him. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, but you don't take a cut price because you like him either.
I'm right.
Back to the subject at hand, and we have a rezoning in front of us that we need to deal with.
Madam Chair.
Sir.
I move to approve rezoning application 000715 Woodside Land Company.
Second.
Any other comments? Yes.
I think this is a good use of the property. It's a good rezoning. I think the transportation proffers are woefully inadequate. You know, it just bothers me that we would take this low of transportation proffers for a 20-acre parcel that is going to generate and need more transportation improvements than that $78,000. That's probably a third of what it should be. At best, it's a third of what it should be. And I don't remember the other two cases where we took the same amount, whether they're similar or not similar, that, you know, we could look at that, but I think the transportation proffer is just woefully inadequate. To rebuild that section of road, it has to be rebuilt in the future. $75,000 won't even get it started.
But here's the thing.
Anyone else?
They haven't identified what they have.
You have a motion on the floor. Any other comments to the motion?
Madam Chair, I think it's a good application. I think it's a good rezoning. We got to start somewhere to get some more industrial land. We've run out of it. We need to track, M2 land's great. It's industrial, it's jobs. I think it's great. I appreciate him coming forward and putting it forward to us.
Anyone else? Will we vote?
Bone, yes.
Donald Lamb, yes.
Trump, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Molden, no.
Thomas, no.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on November the 12th. Our next item is also rezoning at 08-15 of McCann Office Park, submitted by Gray Wolf, Inc. to rezone 154.9 acres as follows. 43.7 from RA Rural Areas to RA Rural Areas with proffers. 6.1 acres from RA Rural Areas to B2 General Business District. 11.7 acres from RA Rural Areas District to M1 Light Industrial, and 93.2 acres from RA Rural Areas District to OM Office Manufacturing District with proffers. The property is located in the southeastern side of Martinsburg Pike Route 11 and Old Charlestown Road, Route 761, and is identified by property identification numbers 44-A25A, 44-A25B, and 44A-40 in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Mr. Rudding.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The rezoning itself looks quite complicated with the breakdown of acreages and zoning districts, but I'll point it out that that breakdown is consistent with the updated land use plan for that area that was worked on within the past couple of years, which called for OM in that area, in addition to some small commercial in support of it, plus a wide variety, if you will, of open space that address the historic resources in that area. The property is identified with a bold line on the screen to your left, and as you can see, the location that you just described, it's south of Old Charlestown Road, just east of Route 11, and on both sides, if you will, of McCann's Road in that area. I'll also point out that in the southern portion of the property, highlighted with the red, is the right-of-way for future Route 37, so that's a consideration with this particular request. It gives you the orientation of the property. The second map shows you the adjacent zoning. Some of it is rural areas, but you'll see there to the south and east, industrial designation, that is the Greystone Project that was rezoned probably four or five years ago. And just to the west, between this property, the creek and Route 11, is a little bit of RP, and that's the Hyatt Run Condominium Project that was looked at recently by the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. I mentioned the land use plan that the county worked on within the past couple of years, and this map on the screen to your left shows that designation, the OM designation, the M1 Industrial just south of Route 37, and the unidentified areas, if you will, which were developmentally sensitive at the time, the Hyatt Run floodplain, environmental area, and just south of Old Charlestown Road in the northern part of the property, of course, the historic context is Stevenson's Depot. Again, the zoning, the RA zoning that is maintained is consistent with the designations here identified in the land use plan for the county. What the applicant provided with the proffer statement was a series of maps, if you will, that identified those zoning locations. It's not very clear to see as a whole, but if there are any questions about that, we can go through it, but it identifies, again, the property south of future Route 37 with the M1 designation. It identifies the Route 37 right-of-way, which of course is part of a dedicated proffer. It identifies the area south and north of McCann's Road with the OM designation, and the area surrounding Hyatt's Run with the RA remaining designation. Two other sheets with the proffer statement are on your screen to your left. The first one recognizes all of the right-of-way dedication along Route 11 North for future improvements and Old Charlestown Road. And the different orientation, if you will, but this shows a fair amount of dedication in the future along Old Charlestown Road, and also shows the future entrance, which would be a restricted entrance, which aligns directly across from the Cut Shore property, Bishop Amory, the rezonings that were looked at in the past from the county are lining up with that future entrance. So again, relatively consistent with the county's land use plan, and the proffer statement with the exhibits that I just went through identifies the location and the dedications associated with this request. and the dedications associated with this request. Mentioned that the proffers provide, if you will, no restriction on the particular types of land uses, or land uses would be permitted. There is no limitation also on the actual development itself. However, you would recognize that there's a cap on the number of trips to 6,713. Again, that relates directly to the TIA that was prepared for this particular request. Fair amount more trips, but it's very, very close to Route 11 and the improvements that are already out there. The areas of open space, environmental, recreational, historical identified are consistent with the plan. The applicant's proffers also include a continuation of the trail system in the vicinity of McCann's Road, building on one that you saw recently for Hyatt Run condominium project, which picked up, if you will, the shared commitment to do this trails in the area. In addition, there's a proffer that provides for some historic signage and extra visitor barking for anybody that may utilize the trails in that area. So that's what's provided. And on the transportation side of things specifically, the biggest one most probably is the Route 37 right-of-way dedication, and that's recognized in the proffer statement. I highlighted all of the additional dedication. Access to this site is going to be from McCann's Lane. The applicant, through the comp plan exercise, and very particularly through the rezoning exercise, worked closely with VDOT to get VDOT's endorsement of the approach to access this property, and it was determined to be McCann's Lane accessing on Route 11 in that area. Now currently, McCann's Lane is of no standard to support it. However, this applicant's proffer statement provides the commitment to improve McCann's Lane to a standard that can support the industrial traffic. In addition, it includes signalization out there on Route 11, if you will. And I will point out that in addition to the signalization and the improvements to McCann's Lane, those transportation proffers, we do have another proffer, and I'll clarify that it's actually 10 cents per building square foot for fire and rescue contribution. That's been a consistent contribution, but I'll point that out. That is, of course, what's in the proffer statement. I inflated that slightly in the staff report, and that was just an omission of a decimal point, but clarify that that's .10, 10 cents per building square foot for fire and rescue. As I mentioned, the land use with this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the impacts associated with the request, in particular the transportation ones, have generally been addressed, particularly to the satisfaction of VDOT. So there may well be a good number of questions associated with this application, too. Be happy to try and answer them. Recognizing Mr. Bishop is here also, if you have any specific transportation questions. And likewise, Mr. Tim Stowe is here representing the applicant tonight.
Any questions? Mr. Rudding? At this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Stowe?
Thank you, and good evening again. We feel this project is a good balance of development property that we can use to bring industrial base, to grow the industrial base here in the county, to preserve green areas that will benefit the community there and to provide the transportation improvements that are needed to support this. And in conjunction with those transportation improvements that have been proffered by others and those that are planned, we feel like this is a fit and a win-win for the county and for the landowner. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that I may. Again, I'm pinch hitting. Although I did prepare the traffic study, I'd be glad to answer any questions that I might.
Questions to Mr. Stowe?
On page two of four of an email that you sent back to VDOT and John Bishop and a number of folks. Number five, there seems to be some disagreement on the proposed cross-section, whether your proposed cross-section in figure seven is adequate for a commercial roadway serving the intensity of the development. Your response back to that was, I guess the comment says it's not adequate from VDOT. Your response back says it is adequate. Did you and VDOT ever agree on your answer to that?
There are two components to that. Once, at the intersection, we anticipate two turn lanes, one for southbound Route 11, one for northbound Route 11, plus the inbound or the eastbound lane for traffic coming into the development. That area would be 36 feet. What I'm referring to is once we clear the area where the queue would occur, our intent would be to narrow the pavement down to two lanes rather than carry the three lanes all the way back, and that area would be 24 feet.
I understand that's your intent, but did VDOT agree to that?
I have no response back from VDOT to my responses. So the short answer is, it's both 36 and 24.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Stowe. Would anyone like to ask Mr. Bishop? Any transportation questions? Always.
If VDOT and the developer don't agree on this, which way does it go? If VDOT says it should be 36-foot, the developer says now it should be 24.
Depends on if the developer wants it to go into the state system or not.
Okay. So VDOT has the ultimate hammer on that.
Yeah, that's, I'll call it a velvet hammer, but yeah, yeah, there's, I'm sure they can find, they can find an accord, and I believe what Mr. Stowe said likely satisfies. But yeah, at the end of the day, if you want a road to come into the state system, you're going to do what VDOT wants to do.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was the answer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty, this is a rezoning. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to rezoning 08-15 McCann Office Park? Anyone? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And let's see here, I do.
If there is no one going to speak anything for or against it, I would recommend approval of 08-15 McCann Office Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to recommend rezoning. Mr. Moen?
Moen, yes.
Donalap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Molden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will also go to the board on November the 12th. Okay, our next item.
Madam Chairman, I'll have to recuse on the next item.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It's rezoning 09-15 Artillery Business Center submitted by Panone Associates to revise proffers associated with rezoning 07-08. This revision relates specifically to transportation proffers. The properties are located east of and adjacent to Shady Elm Road, approximately 4,500 feet south of the intersection of Shady Elm Road and Apple Valley Drive. The properties are identified by property identification numbers 75-A-1 and 75-A-1F in the Back Creek Magisterial District. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As noted, we are operating in the Back Creek District. This was, this is a proffer modification to rezoning 0807, I probably said it backwards, for the artillery business center. Now, at that time, it was a single parcel. It has since been broken up into two parcels, with the smaller portion owned by Northwestern Workshop, and the larger portion still owned by Venture One Partners, although I believe there's been some shifting in the partners. That's immaterial to us. You recall from, at that time, the proffers included $250,000 cash proffer toward general transportation, improvements to frontage wrong Shady Elm Road, the addition of a northbound lane, construction of 1,100 feet of Renaissance Drive into the property heading from west to east toward the railroad tracks and Route 11, as well as design funding for a at-grade crossing if we were able to secure one from CSX. We're dealing with CSX Railroad here, all of those sorts of things. After that rezoning, we had a number of things going on, both here and across the railroad tracks, working with Mrs. Shoemaker on her holdings over there, and we didn't eventually apply for revenue sharing funds. And while, over the years, we've been to the altar numerous times, we've never quite got the agreement in place with this property. I don't think it's due to any lack of desire or diligence on either side, it just hasn't quite fit so far. So you do have a rezoning before you tonight, and that's part of the reason why, from what I understand, as well as some activity that may or may not be taking place on the property to basically line things up so they can do what they need to do. With that said, apologizing, I've got two maps to show you. There's a second one. To briefly summarize the changes, as I noted, $250,000 cash proffer towards transportation has now been removed. The additional right lane on the northbound Shady Elm has been removed. However, those have been replaced with a commitment to enter into revenue sharing. I would note that that was not previously a proffer, that was something that was operating outside the proffers. We were trying to leverage the proffers into something more. However, now we're talking about a proffer to enter into a revenue sharing agreement or local agreement to provide the local match for the completion of Renaissance Drive from its current terminus, which is actually, I go back to the map here. We actually, through partnership with Mrs. Shoemaker, as I mentioned previously, have already built Renaissance from Valley Pike up to an intersection with Prosperity Drive. Prosperity Drive was formerly a cul-de-sac right there at the center of your screen. So that's been bumped out. As you can see, that agreement also ended up with her engaging in a land swap with some neighboring property owners and providing us the rest of the right-of-way to the railroad tracks. So we have those things in place. So their revenue sharing agreement, as their proffering, would be from that point at which it's been completed to across the railroad tracks and on to Shady Elm Drive in an intersection there. They have limited themselves to one building permit per parcel until such time as that revenue sharing agreement has been in place, put into place. The right-of-way dedication along Shady Elm Road has been removed because it's already been done. Right-of-way obligation across parcel 74A68, what we always call the Carbaugh property, which is this property immediately south of the rezoning, which is also a comp plan for industrial but not yet zoned, has been removed. I should note that we, that was a proffer, an upon-request proffer, which we did request some time back, just has, they've not been able to execute it. You know, for whatever reason, buyer and seller did not come together. So strategy's being changed to where they're no longer proffering directly that right-of-way. However, the proffer does say that as part of revenue sharing, we would look to purchase, and they would be providing the match. So another strategy to try and get that done. The internal access road proffer has been removed due to a redundancy with our own ordinance. It's basically not needed, so it was removed. Now, Ms. Perkins pointed something out to me earlier today, which I apologize for missing in my focus on transportation and the fact that this is largely a transportation-focused rezoning. I did miss the fact that the language regarding the historical surveys of the property has been modified to focus on land bay two and exclude land bay one. The problem with that is that the structure that the HRAB was concerned about back at the original rezoning, they weren't even a commenter for this rezoning, is on land bay one, so we may need to iron that piece out. But a smaller issue, given the things that we're focused on, but I didn't want to miss that detail entirely, once she pointed it out to me. Moving on to our agency comments, the only other agencies besides your own staff that was consulted is the county attorney. He did have some concerns about 2.2.1, specifically regarding contract language. Now, I have passed that out to you since it came in yesterday, so that is available before you, as well as an actual signed copy of the proffers. I had noted in my staff report that I was commenting on an unsigned proffer. That signed proffer is in front of you and has come in. VDOT's comment, while based on an earlier version of the proffers, they were fairly concerned, the updated proffer has led to an updated comment, which is in your packet, which sums up as cautiously satisfied. I want to make sure, I know I've given a fairly positive staff report, I want to make sure I don't create false hope. We want this road, we want it badly. It's an important part of our comprehensive plan. I think it will help us greatly in that area of Route 11 and particularly the Route 37 interchange. However, there are things that can go wrong. The largest is, what if something happens and we can't get this crossing agreement in place with CSX? Dealing with CSX is like trying to catch a chicken. I mean, it is not fun. It's, we've been dealing with them since early on in this process, and some staff has changed, and we are going to continue to work on it. And don't get me wrong, I think we can get there. But that's something that really is outside of the applicant's control, it's certainly outside of my control, other than, you know, trying to wrangle them, you know. Rocky eventually did it, so I bet I will too. So we'll get there. But the other issue is with the triggers. We do have two land bays. Each land bay is allowed to pull a building permit, so there is a potential scenario where they get the right user and they never need another building permit, and thus would not need to exercise that proffer into a revenue sharing agreement. That's a possibility. Is it likely? I don't know. Look at the shape of the parcel, maybe, maybe not. So that may be something we need to look at and, you know, chew through. Even if that were to happen, they still have that minimum proffer of constructing 1,100 feet of the roadway. You know, who knows what we'll get into trying to get that right-of-way? These guys have been trying to buy it for a few years, and I don't, I don't know why it hasn't happened. I'm not part of those negotiations. That's another potential hurdle. I just stand here saying, I can't promise that this road for sure will happen if this gets approved like it is tonight. That's not necessarily all because of what's being proffered. There's just a lot of moving parts, as there are with any major road construction project. We do have to have that right-of-way to get this road, because as you can see, it goes right into that parcel. So you can see that right-of-way, and our parcel's up here, the right-of-way's down there. We've got to find a way across. So that'll be its own chase, so to speak. So with that, I apologize for rambling, it's my habit. I can take any question you may have.
Questions for Mr. Bishop? Yes, sir. Mr. Unger?
John, the reason I called you today was because I was confused with these proffers, and it hadn't cleared up a whole lot for me. What's the $250,000, why is it going away?
Well, because they're shifting that commitment toward the revenue sharing agreement. Now, previously, if I can zoom in on the map here, let's see if I can draw some lines without messing up this whole presentation. Previously, the proffer obligated the applicant to do design here of an at-grade crossing, assuming the county could get an at-grade crossing, instruction of roughly 1,100-foot of two lanes here, and purchase, really on our behalf, but on their own, the actual purchase of right-of-way that gets us through the rest of the way. Now, and of course, they had the cash proffer and the improvements to Shady Elm. Now, the proffer would be, if we can get the revenue sharing agreement in place, they're going to pay half the cost of everything all the way from A to B. Now, it's back-of-the-envelope type of chicken scratch, but I think at the end of the day, we're coming out ahead. And even if it didn't cost more, which, I'm not sure it costs a lot more, but I think we're coming out a little ahead, that connection's really important to us, much more so than those improvements on Shady Elm and the cash.
Thank you. Did that help, Mr. Unger?
Yes, may I have a hold on?
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Odom?
No, I didn't have any questions.
No, you didn't.
No, I understood.
Mr. Bishop, I guess going back to, they could build basically one building on each lot.
Yes, sir.
And stop right there, because who knows how much this is going to cost to build the road, especially if we end up having to get a bridge over top of the railroad tracks. I mean, then you're going to be looking at a few million dollars, I imagine. I mean, then you're going to be looking at a few million dollars, I imagine. But they would still be on the hook for half of that, for revenue matching?
Well, the project as scoped is an at-grade crossing. I don't believe this proffer obligates them to a bridge, and I believe.
So if we can't get the at-grade, then we're going to have to bear the brunt of the bridge, and then they would just take from the bridge?
If we want it bad enough, yes, I think we would. You never know if there are additional state opportunities that we could seek out. But yeah, that would be the situation.
I guess the other question would be, back to that one building permit for each lot, would you be more comfortable if there was a timing trigger, like within five or 10 years after the building permit had to be done, instead of holding off for another building permit? Or what would make you more comfortable?
I wouldn't even say it would have to be that long, because to me, that's a long time. The revenue sharing dollars we have, we will not have in five or 10 years if we don't do a project. We won't have them in two years if we don't do a project. So I would be looking at a much tighter timeline. Yes, something that's more tied to time would probably be better for me. I believe there is no lack of intent to enter into an agreement. Drafts have been going back and forth. They've actually recently sent a signed draft, which, while not there yet in terms of some issues I had with the language, it's getting very close. So I see no reason why we couldn't execute an agreement, and I would hope they would agree. I would leave it to the applicant to speak to it within the next few months even, if that long. I really do think we're close.
On the?
The actual execution of the revenue sharing agreement.
Right.
Yes.
I guess what about the at-grade crossing? Because you said that was like chasing a chicken. Who knows how long that's going to take?
Well, that's CSX, you know?
So that could be three, four, 10 years before we could ever get that?
No, no, no. That's not what we're talking about in terms of timeline. The thing with CSX is they start out wanting you to close three crossings to get one. That's where we started out last time. We got them down eventually to one. That guy's off to a different job. Now I'm dealing with a new guy. Who could care less what that guy said? And that's what CSX is like to deal with. So I've been there before. I think we can get there again. It's a negotiation, and it takes time. It doesn't take five, 10 years. It takes probably one year or months. I mean, it just depends on how long it takes us to get the new guy singing to our sheet of music. And that's not an easy task, but I think we will get there. I do believe we'll get there. Will we get away with closing one crossing? No, we might have to find another one to close. That's not easy, but I think it's doable. So there's all of those things that are factors. But as far as if we all of a sudden end up with a bridge, I think that's probably going to end up being more than any of us this time could take. It's not palatable, I would think, to the applicant or to the county in terms of where to come up with that. But that's what it's like to deal with CSX, because unless you take them all the way through that, okay, we're going to let you do this, well, that's just one step. You get that sort of verbal nod and wink that, all right, we're going to move forward with this. Well, then you have to go ahead and design your facility. They have to approve that design. Then the agreement has to come in place, and when you send that agreement in, it's got to come with a big fat check. For example, the agreement we just executed for the bridge on Greystone, that check was almost $300,000. It's not until that point that you've executed that agreement, you've gotten your design approved, you executed agreement, you sent the big fat check. Now you're vested in terms of your crossing approval. That's just how it works.
Any other questions of Mr. Bishop? I thought I saw a hand down there. You okay?
John?
Yes, sir.
I'm not the smartest bull in this pen, but.
Join the club.
Am I understanding that there could be a building built on this property with no improvements whatsoever to Shady Elm proffered? So that traffic would go to Shady Elm because God in the nose when we're going to get Renaissance. I mean.
To build?
That traffic could go from that one building. And is it not true that you don't need to proffer to revenue share, or am I wrong?
That's true. You don't need to proffer to revenue share. You can just proffer an improvement and then, and then come to the county and ask them to apply for, ask us to apply for revenue sharing. We can end up in a revenue sharing agreement. You don't have to proffer to be in it. You're correct. You can build on Land Bay One without doing any improvements beyond what a site plan would require, whatever VDOT would say you have to do when you're building your entrances and things like that, turn lanes, things like that. Building, to build on Land Bay Two, they do need to build their 1,100-foot of roadway, but that's still with not, without going anywhere, that's still an 1,100-foot driveway on a Shady Elm road.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I think it's time that we spoke with Mr. Sowers.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Patrick Sowers with Penoni Associates here on behalf of the application and representing NW Works, who, as John pointed out, owns the smaller 17-acre parcel of the site. Also with me tonight is Mr. Ty Lawson, who's representing Venture One that owns the other 40.6 acres on the property. Sorry, go back this way. So just to cover a couple of things quickly, on the historic, study for historic structures in a property. Previously, the application had the front approximately 28 acres in Land Bay One, the rear 30 in Land Bay Two. Since the property was subdivided, we've used now the 17 acres NW Works owns as Land Bay One and the 40.6 acres Venture One owns as Land Bay Two. Here you can see where the property line actually jogs around the existing brick rancher that's on the property, but there's a second dwelling, and that's the old dwelling. If you look right there, that's the old structure. It's within Land Bay Two. That's why the proffer's tied to development within Land Bay Two, because it's not the brick rancher we're concerned with, it's the older house, and that is separate. And that was discussed with staff in a separate meeting that John and Bishop weren't in attendance. So just want to be clear, it's within Land Bay Two, not within Land Bay One. That's why the proffer's set up that way. Secondly, kind of the big picture and what we're trying to accomplish here, when this rezoning was taken through in 2008, long-term, the solution is Renaissance Drive. Make that connection around 11, not to send everybody up to Apple Valley Road on Shady Elm. So the proffers in 2008 had 1,100 feet on site, as Mr. Bishop pointed out, of Renaissance Drive, and then no construction beyond that. It was right-of-way off-site. What we've tried to do is focus, instead of having efforts on Shady Elm Road, let's focus that on getting what's the actual transportation solution for the area in place, and that's Renaissance Drive. That serves that area well. It's comp plan for industrial. We want those trips to get out to Route 11, not to drive a mile up to Apple Valley Road. As far as the improvements to Shady Elm, the existing proffers had a one lane across the frontage of the property. That's, this is the 2008 proffers. That was for a continuous right turn lane across the frontage. VDOT, at the entrance permit stage with site plans, we're going to have turn lanes into, there's a maximum of two entrances into the property from Shady Elm Road. Those turn lanes are going to be in place. But since the long-term focus was, how do we get that connection to Route 11 through Renaissance Drive? That was the purpose of the $250,000 cash proffer in 2008. And the reason it's been removed is because now the applicant has proffered, the Land Bay Two owner specifically, to enter into an agreement to make that connection a reality through the revenue sharing program. So since we know that's the long-term goal, we felt like that was a better alternative for the county. Let's not send trips up Shady Elm, let's get them out to Route 11. As far as the building permit in the agreement, one, there is the separate proffer for 1,100 feet on site. As Mr. Bishop pointed out, there's some unknowns for the agreement long-term, the at-grade crossing, working with CSX. The way the proffer's structured beyond one building permit until that agreement's in place, you can't get another building permit. So there's, there's some give and take here, where I think working closely with staff, we try to craft a proffer that ensures that everybody wants the road, and we want to get that road built. And there's a short timeline on how long these revenue sharing funds are available, so we're hoping to do that in the short term. But how do we structure the proffer so that there's some, some help for everybody involved in the application? Ultimately, VDOT has said they're cautiously satisfied, but satisfied because we're going in the direction of trying to get that road segment in place. So we think this is a better application, and that's why we're before you tonight. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And as I said, Mr. Ty Lawson's here on behalf of Venture One, if there's any questions for Venture One.
Patrick, you've been talking about doing 1,100 feet of, it was even called a driveway at night one time. That is going to be Renaissance Drive someday.
Yes, sir. It's proffered as the east-west collector within an 80-foot right-of-way.
Give me approximately, and I don't want it specific, about where 1,100 feet comes to off of Shady Elm?
It's about halfway down the site.
Okay.
Along that southern property line.
Any other questions of Mr. Sowers?
Ms. Sowers, take me through the, while I'm reading these VDOT letters, September 25th letter states that they're not satisfied. Maybe I've missed something in all this trying to stay up with it, or, you know, the existing, that they're not satisfied with the transportation proffers. And then in October 13th, they're cautiously satisfied. What changed to make that happen?
The actual proffering of entering into an agreement.
Okay, that's right.
For that revenue sharing.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to us regarding this rezoning for Artillery Business Center? Anyone at all? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. This is in the Beck Creek Magisterial District, and are there any other comments to make?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I am. I'm overall, I guess, in favor of the changes, except for the one item that there is that slight loophole that potentially they would never have to enter into the agreement if they only stop at two buildings.
That's right.
And they're off the hook. I mean, you could get potentially one user in there, takes that whole pit place, uses for truck parking or something else, and it might be 20 years for the second building permit's ever needed. So I'm a little concerned that there's not some other trigger in there to guarantee that this agreement will be in place when we need it. It's bound to comment.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Just to say that Gary's got a valid recommendation, but it's just looking at what's going on. And these people have been over backwards trying to get this road through here, in my opinion. And they're still putting the road in as far back as to where it doesn't make a real big dog leg in it. So I don't know what else you can ask of them. They've done everything that you want them to do, so I don't have a problem with it.
Any other comments?
I agree with Mr. Oates. I think that we need a trigger in there, because I think, you know, it's, this plan's been marketed, it's been tried to be developed. I can't see the, I just think it's going to be too much of a burden putting out on Shady Elm Road, right? Without something in there to mitigate that, I just have a hard time, you know, and it seems like the easy parts are done. We've got right up to the railroad, now we've got to do the handle of the railroad, we've got to handle extension. Everything's in there except a trigger to what's going to make it happen. And I know that everybody wants to see, develop, but this is, you know, it's, it's, it just, I have to agree with Mr. Oates. I think we need something in there to trigger. Because I see just one building on each parcel being built, then that's it. And then we're dealing with Shady Elm all over again, on how to handle that traffic.
I think that's a very valid concern, because, I mean, just like you said, they're marketing it now. We have no idea what the traffic's going to be, what the makeup's going to be. And, yeah, I mean, probably a developer wouldn't want to come in there if they were an intensive traffic generator, knowing that their traffic has to go on Shady Elm Road, but what if somebody? We always deal with the what-ifs, and unfortunately, sometimes they come true. Either we ought to have a limit on traffic, or we ought to have some way to get that revenue sharing over here, guarantee you can get it.
I guess I would support a recommendation of approval with the condition that a timing trigger be incorporated in a proffer 2.2.1 rather than just building permit. 2.22, 2.21.
Okay.
Gary clarified that for me. I'm not sure if I understand.
Well, right now, the trigger is whenever they pull that second building permit, at that time, they have to have the agreement in place. Rather than do that, say, within 24 months, 36 months, because if we need this road and the window's going to be closing, I mean, it might be three years for the first building permit. I think it should be a timing issue of, this thing needs to be done in the next 12 months or 18 months, so that we know the money's there when, when everything falls in place.
Any comments about that?
Well, yeah, part of this even gets more concerning when we're dealing with two potential owners. We have two landbays. What if they issue the permit, the building permit for Land Bay One? He has no interest at all in the Land Bay Two road. I think we need something in there, like you're talking about, either 24 months after they issue a permit on Land Bay One, or 36 months, whatever folks think appropriate. But one for the second building permit, I think, is potentially going to be problematic.
I guess what I'm thinking is not so much after the building permit, but from the date of the rezoning approval. Because again, we're looking at a two-to-three-year window when the funds are going to be available. So if this agreement isn't in place in the next three years, then it may not be worth anything.
Yeah. That'd be fine, too. I think that would be, that's a good comment.
Did you all hear that?
I didn't hear it last, what Roger said.
I think his comment about from the date of rezoning is probably better than from the permit, from the building permit.
Madam Chairman, so we're going to have that wording added to this? Is that what you're saying, Gary?
Oh, well, I just said I'd support a recommendation of approval if that wording was added to the motion, if it was, you know, conditioned upon.
That come back before us again, or is it going to the board with that wording? Is that how that would work, or?
It goes to the board?
It would go to the board and recognize it's the planning commission, approve it, condition upon, different timing mechanism.
There's a puzzlement down there on the end.
Well, thinking just more about the terminology, I understand where everybody's going with it, and I don't disagree with the concerns. You know, the question is whether or not it's an action conditioned on that change, or is it a recommendation to the board that the proffers be revised or reflect, you know, that? I kind of defer to staff ultimately.
Board's decision if they want to do it or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a timing issue also with some of these, and that's why I don't want to see it held up on the tabling.
No, I support, I support what you're, what you're proposing. Yeah, so I'm comfortable with that. I just want to be sure we're putting it out there in the right way for the board.
Mr. Bishop?
At risk of getting myself in trouble with smarter people than me, I don't believe your, your recommendation can be a contingent recommendation. You can note that the board can consider, should consider an item in your opinion, but once you've made your motion, they may or may not consider it. But your specific action can't require a change to a voluntary proffer.
So we can make an approval with a strong recommendation of?
Yes. It's just a note to the board as opposed to a contingent action.
I'm fine with that.
And we have that, we have done that before. So where are we, folks?
I'll make a recommendation of approval to 0915 Artillery Business Center with Gary worded for me.
With a strong recommendation that the timing be changed to a date after rezoning and not building permits.
Is that clear to the universe?
I'll second that, that dual motion.
So, we have a motion to approve, and also to strongly recommend a timing after rezoning for this issue to be accomplished, so. Anyone else? Any other thoughts? Okay, Mr. Moan, would you like to vote?
Moan, yes.
Donlap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, no.
Malden, no.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the board on the 28th of October. Okay, thank you. Our next item is also a public hearing item. It is an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning, regarding Article Four Agricultural and Residential District, Part 401 RA Rural Areas District. To cut to the chase, this is a revision to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to include self-storage facilities as a conditional use in the rural areas zoning district. Mrs. Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a public hearing for an ordinance amendment to include self-storage facilities as a conditional use in the RA, which is the Rural Areas District. Currently, that use is only permitted in the B2, B3, M1, and M2 districts by right. I would note, this was a request for discussion, just due to the fact that this use requires limited infrastructure, and therefore it may be appropriate in certain locations, due to it doesn't need a lot of public infrastructure. So the way the ordinance has been drafted for the CUP, there are a number of existing supplementary use regulations that already apply to self-storage. Those would apply, as well as, the developments first would need to conform to all B2 standards, which is your parking and your landscaping. The development would need to have access onto a paved state road. And third, the property would need to be located within a designated and defined rural community center, as identified in the comprehensive plan. Now, that third bullet was added after the Board of Supervisors' discussion. They had a number of concerns about the self-storage being located within various areas in the RA district, that it wouldn't be appropriate, so we limited it a little bit more for the public hearing. So the DRC discussed this back in July. It came before you as a discussion at your August meeting, and the board at their September meeting. So tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this proposed addition.
Is there a question of Mrs. Perkins? Yes, sir, Mr. Oats.
I have two. One, I guess, conform to all B2 district standards, is that where a site plan requirement would be, or is this an illustrative sketch scenario?
This would be a site plan.
All right. And the second one is, I don't agree with the rural community center designation, particularly since those are generally pretty tiny lots in our rural centers, where many stories really wouldn't be appropriate. It'd be more appropriate in areas where you have five-acre lots, something where the neighbors aren't going to be that close. Putting this in, you know, out in those small lots of Albany, or right in the middle of Gore, amongst all the housing, just makes no sense to me. If anything, we ought to discourage them from going in those tight communities, and put them out in areas where they'll be, I guess, lost, or not seen from the road, they can be shielded. So I'm not in favor at all of that. I'm fine with the ordinance as far as allowing mini storage in RA, but definitely not with that designation, that requirement.
Okay, Mr. Thomas has expressed an agreement. I see other heads nodding. Someone like to make a motion?
This is a public hearing, so we do need.
Oh, excuse me, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this change, the ordinance? Anyone? All right, we will close the public hearing now. We need a recommendation?
I would make a recommendation that we approve the ordinance, with a strong recommendation that the requirement that it be designated and defined within rural community centers as identified in the comprehensive plan be stricken, as those areas would probably be inappropriate for this.
I'll second that, and then I'd like to ask staff.
Do we have to, since this is an internal document, it's not a proffer from somebody else, does it have to be a strong recommendation, or can we delete that as a condition of our approval?
Either way, it doesn't matter.
I'd rather see us delete it as a condition.
Delete it.
Glad to modify my motion.
And I'll second the modified motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and to remove the item dealing with placing these in rural community centers. Okay. All righty, Mr. Unger.
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Donlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will also go to the board on November the 12th. All right, the next item is also an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning, Article 10, Board of Zoning Appeals. And again, we cut to the chase, because this is dealing with a revision to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to revise and update the variance requirements per the Code of Virginia. Mrs. Perkins.
Again, thank you. During the 2015 session, the Virginia General Assembly passed amendments to the Code of Virginia pertaining to the operation of local board zoning appeals. Due to these changes, there are a number zoning ordinance modifications that are required to bring our code in conformance with the state code changes. So really, what the specific changes include, first, there's a revised definition of variance. Second, there's some changes to the administrative appeals sections. One of the other changes within Section C, it's the modification of the term unnecessary hardships. That's been now replaced with the phrase unreasonable restriction on the utilization of property. And there's some other, really just movement of text, just to conform with the flow of the state code. So this was discussed by the DRC, the Planning Commission, and the board. And so tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Questions of Mrs. Perkins. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this ordinance amendment dealing with the variance requirements that we have? All right, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the ordinance amendments concerning variance requirements.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Oats, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Donlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This also will go to the board on November the 12th. Okay, our next item is a public hearing item, and it's an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning, Article Four Agricultural and Residential District. And again, this, to the chase, this is the revision to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to revise the setback from parcels within the agricultural and forestal districts in the RA district. Mrs. Perkins.
Again, thank you. Now, this ordinance amendment arose from the recent agricultural and forestal district update. What happened, there were some issues that came about due to parcels that were less than five acres in size, being included in the agricultural and forestal districts, due to their impacts on adjacent properties. Really, the issue was that someone with a small piece of property that was within an adopted agricultural district would have impacts on their neighboring properties due to the imposition of the 200-foot setback. So when the board held a public hearing for the inclusion of those smaller parcels, they deferred action on a number of those, and directed staff to prepare an ordinance amendment, so that they could adopt those parcels into the district without impacting their neighbors. So really, what the proposed amendment before you states, it utilizes the RA, rural areas setbacks that were adopted back in 2007. Those setbacks are based on the size of the adjoining properties. So what it says, parcels within an agricultural district that are six acres or less would require a 50-foot setback, and parcels over six acres would require a 200-foot setback. So this is really just the table that would be shown in the ordinance. It shows the existing six acres or less, six acres more, the 50 and the 100 foot. It includes then the agricultural, six acres or less, six acres or more, the 50 and the 200, and it carries for the orchard setbacks, which has always been 200. So, the Planning Commission discussed this at your August 19th meeting. It was then forwarded to the board with the six-acre requirement. The DRC discussed the ordinance amendment at their August meeting as well. However, they recommended a two-acre instead of the six. When it went to the Board of Supervisors for a discussion, they carried forward with the six acres, and that's what they sent forward to public hearing. So tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the commission to forward to the board. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mrs. Perkins? See one. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this regarding this ordinance change? Anyone at all? Then we will close the public hearing. Mr. Oats.
Madam Chairman, when the issue of, or concerns about these setbacks are brought up, basically every example that was shown to us, or that was proposed, was basically parcels that were less than two acres. Really, they were about one-acre parcels. I just see this as one of those things where you swing the pendulum, you went too far one way, now we're going all the way up to a six-acre tract on this one, you've gone too far the other. What DRC had sent forward, of saying two acres, basically captured every single problem. Didn't need to go all the way up to the six-acre requirement. I agree with that, and I'm not supportive of changing all the way up to six acres. I think two acres is plenty.
I kind of like the six acres. Why, I guess, what difference do you see? I mean, if somebody has, personally, I don't think if you have a five-acre plot, you should be in the agricultural and forestal district anyhow. You certainly shouldn't be able to control the development of your neighbor's property for that 200-foot setback, if you have five acres. What do you see as the downside going from two to six?
Well, you can put a lot of stuff on a five-acre parcel. Anything from hay to orchards to corn, to, you're going to have spray materials that have to be so far from residential houses, so that's going to dictate how far then you could work that acreage. Where I live, we've got 40 acres that are made up mostly of five-acre parcels, but they're contiguous. So that's why I don't think it needs to go above the two-acre requirement, because, like I said, every single example that was showed was lots that were smaller than two acres. So why are we going all the way up to six now, to solve a problem that the small lots was the issue? I just think you've gone from one extreme to the other.
Yep.
Instead of taking care of the problem, you've included a lot more parcels now in this thing than, and they weren't even an issue before.
Well, but if you have a five-acre parcel in the middle of an agricultural district, and all of a sudden, they want a 200-foot setback on their neighbor's property, this limits that to 50-foot. I don't, you know, I think we ought to protect the surrounding properties, not the five-acre properties on this. I don't think that somebody that has five acres should be able to control what happens on his neighbor's property 200 feet from his property line.
At six acres, you should. I guess.
So I think it should be 10 acres or more.
10.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm kind of the opposite of where you're going, Gary, because I don't, the, you know, the demographics of Frederick County are changing. We're going to get a lot more people in that are coming out from more urban areas. And when that happens, we always get to people that like, you know, they don't want any development around them, they want to be able to sit in their backyard and watch the deer in their neighbor's yard, and they don't want their neighbor to be able to develop anything there. And I think the farmers need to be able to farm their land, and if we're already taking 50 feet away from them, I don't know why we'd take 200 feet away from them.
You lost, because in one sense, it sounded like you were supporting the development, not the farmer, and then your last statement was protect the farmer, not the development.
Well, I'm for protecting the farmers on this, on the five-acre lots.
So the farmer's on five acres or less, he's not protected, but more than five, he's good.
Well, I don't consider five acres or less a farm. You know, I never, I know people disagree with me on that, but I never consider that a farm.
Back to the subject at hand, this was, this was directed to us by the board, to hold a public hearing on the six-acre requirement. And so that's what we're dealing with. At least, I presume, that's what we're dealing with.
That sounds good to me.
Time for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of the ordinance amendment setbacks from agricultural and forestal districts.
Second.
Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Donlap, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Kenny, no.
Malden, no.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, no.
Manuel, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, no.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the board also on November the 12th. What an agenda. Anyway, we have come to the end of hours, and I would like to.
I don't want somebody to get troubled with me.
Folks, please. Larry, I would like to advise us all that we will have a meeting on November the 4th. So make sure you have that on your skin. November the 4th. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
We will have two meetings again in November.
Perhaps we may have one on the 18th, yes. Yeah, please. Thank you all very much.